Taking your order, the town council work session Tuesday, July 15, 2025 at 4:00 PM, being held in the council chambers at 150 East Monroe Street in Withfield. So, the first thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll need a motion or somehow amended.
Madam Mayor, I would like to amend the agenda tonight, please, before we proceed. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include discussion regarding the Monroe Street Peppers Ferry Road improvements project, the financing or cash purchase of a new fire pumper apparatus to review needed repairs at the wastewater treatment plant, and the application for grant funds, and to include a closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711A to discuss Item C, discussion regarding town-appointed employees.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none? Be a roll call vote. We'll start with the councilman Hand.
Aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
All right. Thank you all. Usually, we do not do citizens' period, but we do have a citizen that has come and wishes to speak, so I think we're going to give her three minutes up at the podium before we get started. So, if you'll come up here and state your name and your address, please.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak today. My name is Mary Als Watson. I'm at 130 Sherwood East here in Withfield. And I know Ms. Holton. She came and visited me last week. I just wanted to come in and talk to you about what we were discussing, an addition of a, I want to add a front porch to my house, and I have some documents. I can pass copies. Everybody have a copy. She and Mr. Sprager came out and did measure from the right-of-way line that was, I guess someone from the town came and put that there. I am short two feet from what I want to do. It was measured that from the right-of-way line to my front porch, or to the porch, was 45 feet, four inches, and it needs to be 40 feet. And I'm wanting to put a six-by-eight porch on the front of my house to improve the appearance. I know I'll be paying taxes to add this, wanting to improve the appearance of the house. The first picture in the packet shows the house next to me and how much closer it is to the road than what my house is. And then, there's just some other pictures there in addition to what, showing the flags. My understanding from the Rudolph and Delft is going to be doing the construction, the poles or the posts will sit out at six feet. The overhang is, I think, the issue here. They're going to try to match the overhang to my house, which is two feet. So, the porch poster will be sitting out six feet, but the overhang would be, I guess, the total shed-style roof would be eight feet. So, there's a two-foot, and there's also be a concrete slab board. So, I was just going to ask if there was any way, because I would like for it all to match, looking original to the house, if that could be something that could be looked at and considered at all, with the house next to me sitting way closer to the road with...
Ms. Watson, I want to ask on this. How far are you going to come out with, I think you mentioned a concrete pad?
It would be a six-by-eight pad.
Okay. How big, how much allowance is the concrete pad allowed out?
I was told I could put any kind of size pad out that I wanted, but it's just going to be the same size as the porch.
So, you could come out as far as you want to?
I was going to come out six feet and over towards the bay window there, eight feet. So, just six foot out. Clearly, looking at the first picture, there's not a lot of, you know, trying to keep rain off people when they come to the front door. It does have a large overhang, but they are going to build out from that overhang and make it look like it was, like it is, is an original part of the house. But if they do a shorter overhang, it won't match as well. So, I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding why it can't, if the poster at six feet, why it can't overhang two feet.
The way I understand it, the town council doesn't have any authority to grant anything on this.
Okay.
So, I would recommend that it go to the planning commission, but we don't have any authority to go beyond what our ordinance say.
Okay.
And the only way I think that you could do that is through maybe a variance, or maybe, and I would let Ms. Holton speak to that, I don't, I'm not sure what it would be, but we, as a council, cannot vote to give you this permission. We don't have that authority.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was told a variance was not an option. I mean, I'm willing to go that route if that's an option.
Can she not do a special exception permit?
Not for this. A variance, though, isn't an option, or?
A variance is an option, but you have to prove a hardship that's not shared by other properties in the zone district, and just not wanting to follow the standard is not, I mean, you can, you can apply for a BZA variance. The application is $500. But like I told her when I met her on-site, I don't think that she has a good application for a variance. I doubt that the BZA would grant it, because usually variances have to do with something unique to the site, like the topography, or the steepness, or something historic, or something of that nature. And just saying that you don't want to meet the standard is not usually grounds for granting a variance. So, she, she has the option to apply, but I told her I don't think she's got a good application, just because I'd hate to see her waste her $500 if...
Was it measured correctly?
It was measured correctly, yes. And I understand that maybe the, the building official was asked today to go back out and remeasure it, and he came out with the same measurements that I did. So, we've done as staff, we've met with her and the contractor on-site, we've marked the right-of-way, we've done everything that we can do on behalf of staff to try to assist her with their project. So, I really don't know what other remedies are available other than meeting the standard.
Ms. Corvyn, you have any suggestions?
I mean, really, like she said, the only thing, it would be a variance, and you have to prove the hardship. And if she can't prove the hardship in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals, then she would have to meet the standard that's listed in the ordinance.
My curiosity is like the house that's out here further, how was that allowed?
I don't know. I believe it was built in the 70s, so I was not here in the 70s, nor was I in permitting in the 70s. I don't know why that was allowed to be built that way. My role as zoning administrator is to enforce the standards that we have currently for the R1 Zone District, and that's what I am doing.
So, was this the same ordinance at the time both homes were built, or was it a different ordinance when the home next door was built? Does anybody know or have the answer to that question?
I do not know.
Ms. Watson, was your home built first or the other home? Do you know?
My understanding, mine was built in 1970, and the house beside me was 1974.
Okay. Is there any way we can go back and look at those records and check that?
I mean, we can, but I don't think it changes anything about the current ordinance. I mean, it's a law. The current ordinance is a law that must be followed. So, you could go back and look, but she still has to follow the law.
I don't think these building permits are required to be kept that long, so they're probably already destroyed through the Library of Virginia. There wouldn't be any permits to go back and look at. I believe the former building official has followed the state law and gotten rid of all those records, which is what we're supposed to do. There wouldn't be any building permits to look at.
I'm just curious. The right-of-way comes in like six, seven feet off the street line, and it's just, you know, if I had that, if I could go from the street line, it would be permitted.
Is that town property? Is that what, is that what they're telling you that is town property?
I'm assuming when they mark it, say that's the right-of-way.
We did. We asked Billy to go out there and mark it. He's here this evening, and he is a licensed surveyor, so...
No, I'm just asking, do, does the town own from so far from her house? Is that why she can't build it? Is that correct?
No. I mean, you know, just to be honest with everybody in this room, the Zone District setbacks for R1 Zone District are quite large. I mean, 40 feet setback, and all of the homes down through there in Country Club are R1. And then, when you drive through there, you will notice that all the homes are set back pretty far back from the street, because that's what the Zone District standards are. So, I'm sorry. I know that, you know, sometimes people don't like zoning. It's a hard job that us as staff have, where we have to go out and tell people that they can't do what they want to do, but just like a police officer, we're enforcing the rules.
We're sorry.
Okay.
We just don't have any authority to go over our ordinances, so we just can't help you. We can't.
I guess after they left and I saw that that house was sitting so close, and it, the posts wouldn't even be near, so...
Do you maintain that property where they marked forward?
Yes.
You maintain all that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Before we continue, I would like to apologize for those in the room and those that are listening by online, that our agenda is a little bit mixed-max tonight, so it's not as that was presented to the public. Next on the agenda would be the Monroe Peppers Ferry Road.
Sorry to always have an amended agenda for y'all. I do apologize for that. Tonight, what I'd like to request from the council is the authorization to move forward with the task order as presented by Horton Prophet for the Monroe and Peppers Ferry Health and Safety, or, I'm sorry, Safety Improvement Program. So, what we have, you should have the plan sets in front of you, I do believe? No? Okay. Basically, these are the improvements that go along Monroe Street and Peppers Ferry. They include some crosswalks, as well as some speed reduction efforts that we have put in to preliminary plans and presented to the state, and they improve them through the project with a cost share of 0% to the town.
Excuse me, Sarah. Sorry to interrupt, but I don't have what you're...
I don't have it either.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
You go have them shortly.
Thank you, sir. Sorry to interrupt you.
But these are, these are those plans that include the bumpouts that have been installed on the town's behalf to show that we had some buy-in in the project, which helped us succeed in the application. Dr. Woods is here today because he has the extensive amount of knowledge that went into this program, this application phase, and the original initial design. So, what I would ask tonight, this project, which amounts to $1,128,000, or $1,128,906 with a town share of $0, be considered moving forward with the engineering group to discuss any design controversies or any design considerations that are not addressed in the current plan set. Now, I'm speaking to the plans, and you don't have them in front of you, and I understand that's a difficulty. Hopefully, we can get those in front of you shortly. The consultation with the engineering group comes up to $61,500 for the planned preparation. The bidding assistance is $33,500. And then, the resident project representative, which is a third-party inspector for all work done, to make sure that we've done the work right and to VDOT standards, is also covered underneath that state program.
And you said it was $1,000,000?
So, I have the same questions I asked when this first came up months and months ago, is why are we not having a public hearing? Are we going from four lanes to two on this street?
I believe it's four lanes to two lanes and a center turn-only lane.
Yeah. So, just like on East Main, I'm sorry, West Main, when we had a public hearing, we had a, we had people that came out.
Yes, sir.
Spoke against it. So, why are we not, I don't think anything like this should ever be done without public input. So, I'm not supporting it without a public hearing, and it needs to be presented like it was on West Main. People voted it down. They didn't want it. So, I don't think it's unfair for us to ever try to do anything like this without public input. So, I'm not okay regardless, as, I mean, if it's going to be shrinking down from lanes, and we don't have it in front of me, so I can't look at it, so I can't answer any questions.
I understand.
It would be good to have the citizens' input, because I think for so many years, they didn't.
Because there's a lot of people who live on that road, and a lot of traffic that comes in from Max Meadows, the Cove, all that traffic comes down there. I think a public hearing should always be, and we shouldn't really have to ask for that. I think it should be part of, of the process, because... Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, sir.
No, I, I agree with you completely, actually. The, well, what I was trying to proceed with tonight is to get the task order from the engineers, so that we have the public input to input into the actual design work that they're going to be doing.
I understand, sir.
Actually, we just had a public input meeting for the other, the small project, the Peppers Ferry Road gap, sidewalk gap, which just brings that from the old Alco and down around. Unfortunately, we didn't have any attendance, but also, it's a, it's a very well-liked project, it seems.
And I'm, and this might be great, I just, it would take some pressure off of us if we had some public input, so we're not making a decision for everybody.
Yes.
So, I appreciate that. And also, we had requested a speed reduction.
Reduction.
Speed reduction study, maybe, on Peppers Ferry Road prior to all this happening. I requested that months ago. I know it's, that's okay if it hasn't happened.
It has not yet.
Would you all consider that, because we still have that issue of the speed, regardless if you put these in, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. If you put these in or not, there's still no reduction of speed from 35 miles an hour through the light onto Monroe starting down the hill. It doesn't reduce...
Right. The transaction is, intersection is, so...
I was asking, would that, could we, because I think you were going to maybe make that part of this. I vaguely remember...
That, that was, that was my understanding, was that that would be part of this design for this project itself.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's all right, now.
So, I guess I spoke a little bit out of sequence. What I'm, I'm wanting to address is all the concerns with this project through the professional engineering group, so that we can get a cohesive project that everybody's happy with.
Well, I support that. That's, so we can get started on it, right?
Yeah.
So, I believe what we heard from VDOT was by using the design consultants to meet with not only town council, but with the citizens to try to refine this project, that we could come up with a project that the council and the citizens and staff and everybody could believe in, and then therefore, request from VDOT any design changes from the initial grant application. And then, at that point, VDOT would say, yes, we're still going to give you the grant, or no, it's too far.
That is my understanding.
Deviated from the original plan. Is that what you remember hearing?
Right. We still have to stay within the scope of the H-SIP program, which means that, you know, safety is paramount. We are still trying to ensure the safety over and above what is currently on the ground.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Austin.
Thank you.
So, did you need authorization from council to sign the task order?
If I could tonight get authorization to move forward with the engineering group. This is not for the project moving forward. This is for the engineering group task order to move forward with the project.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion? Yep. So, we have a motion to go forward with the...
Engineering task order for Monroe and Peppers Ferry H-SIP project.
That's what I was going to say. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Was there a motion? There wasn't a motion, Madam Mayor.
She...
You did.
She used his...
I'm sorry.
People have to get a first from the council. We need a first from the council.
So, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Be a roll call vote. Hand?
Aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Good to go for that first.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear on something. If we can go back to the last thing we were talking about, I just want to make sure, and I could be wrong, I mean, I just want to know, were the police called out there to go measure two out at Ms. Watson's property?
No.
From what you're referencing?
I was using, I was using an analogy about enforcing codes and ordinances.
Okay.
So, when you act as a zoning administrator, you're actually enforcing an ordinance, and just like a police officer would be enforcing the law.
But we don't use the police officer to enforce our codes.
No. Just making an analogy.
I just want to make sure. I thought, oh, gosh, hope nobody, hope the police didn't go out there and measure, so...
Absolutely not.
Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
So, next on the agenda is wastewater and treatment discussion of the...
You should have stayed up there.
Billy's here to support me on some of this. We had entered into a consent order with the state of Virginia last year in September over some, excuse me, over some of the pump stations not functioning correctly as well as some issues with the state of the infrastructure at our wastewater treatment plant. Here recently, we had an amendment to that consent order, which also included the clarifiers that we lost in Hurricane Holly. So, part of the original consent order was to initiate and complete a preliminary engineering report that went down to the plan. They looked at the whole structure as it is, just in the plant, not the pump stations themselves, but just on-site at the plant. It took from, I think we initiated that progress, that process in August. We just received the draft, draft report on Friday. Sherry was able to sit in with me and Billy and the plant superintendent, Tony Keen, and they delivered us a list of immediate needs, or the highest criticality. Part of that consent order also enjoins the town to complete those critical objects by December 31 of 2029. Those critical objects should be in front of you, correct?
That's correct.
On the spreadsheet? And basically, what we found through the third-party engineers, taking a completely objective view of our system, is these are the things that need to be done as soon as possible. This will return us to good standings with the state, as well as federal law that revolves around the treatment and release of wastewater into the environment. The total for these projects is not small. Adjusted for inflation over a one-year design period and a one-year mid-construction period, you're looking at a total cost of $16,199,000. Luckily, part of the consent order, I guess you would say benefit, is that gives us a foot-up automatic scoring points on any type of grant application that we may have. So, right now, with these seven engineers that did this study, because they'd be the subject matter experts right now, we are looking to apply for a Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund grant, and I say grant, it's actually a loan with grant, with principal forgiveness. That principal forgiveness is derived from a formula that DEQ comes up with. I've seen it anywhere from 25% to 75%. 50% is pretty average, but the other page that you have printed out in there is wastewater rate summary by system size. Sometimes, on these applications, especially when it's tied to federal money, which is, this clean water fund is actually funded by the EPA, and then they draft it down to the state, and the state administers it. What you see is a rate study that is done every year by a company called TRC. This is the 36th Annual Report. This is only looking at the state of Virginia. So, these dark blues that are outlined in red, that is for a 3,000, a 4,000, and a 5,000-gallon wastewater customer. Over all the state of Virginia, you're looking at an average of 3783 just for the wastewater bill, 4494, and 5349 for the different classes of use. Down below, you'll see the town of Withfield wastewater rates at 2175, 2875, and 3575 for those same corresponding amounts. The reason I'm bringing this up is there may be a requirement for the town to match a median household income percentage to bring it up to probably close to average. I cannot say for sure. It would have to do with their review of the application to see whether or not we justify a rate increase. Our rates are good, or I have never heard of a reduction, but it's possible, I'm sure. But I want everyone to be aware, open, honest communication, that this is a possibility.
So, what was the, so we may have to bring our rates up in order to apply?
Well, it would be, if we were to get the award, right, that award would say, you have to do X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
Now, when we get that award, it's, it's sent to us without us yet accepting it. So, it would be a package. We could look at it. It might say, raise your rates by 50 cents, or $500, some, some amount.
Right.
And if we look at that, and we find that that fits with our community, and that fits with our outlook, then we can accept that agreement at that point.
And how much is that grant application?
The grant application is free.
How much?
It's free.
It's free?
Yes.
And then, how much would we get, or we wouldn't have to match anything?
Well, we would have to, like most grants, you have to fund it on the front, and then you get the reimbursement on the back.
Then they reimburse it on the end?
Yes.
Okay. I just need to make clear on that.
Yes. I know that this is, this is a very large number. It makes me sweat.
Is this something that is spread out over one, two, three years? Is this just something you expect in one year to happen? I mean, what would be?
I would expect to...
The timeframe of that? Because I was wondering if it would be in more than one budget?
I would expect this to be completed by the end of 2029. So, we're looking at, let's call it four years, four and a half years total, so you're talking multiple budgets. We have done the rate increase here this year. That should boost our revenue. We can start funding this out through a CIP project with possible outside loans to help cover the, the large amount. It is a heavy lift, but I do believe it's completely necessary.
It's been coming, hasn't it?
It's been a second. Yeah.
So, how, how long have we had this list of, the to-do list?
Friday.
Just Friday?
That's why, that's why this came quickly. The deadline for that application is the 27th of this month. Now, if we don't make that, there, it is an application that comes up every year, but we're already a year behind at that point, and since we do have a deadline also from DEQ, I'd like to try to jump on it as soon as possible.
But, Mr. Austin, it's not, we've had problems on and off for years, right? They've just sort of been like, put on the back burner.
Exactly. It's, it's hard to keep present in your mind, oh, we did this, but we did this little patch, so we'll forget about it for now.
Right.
I'm not blaming any, any single person, any operator, or anything else. It's just nothing in water, and nothing in wastewater is cheap.
Right.
And when it comes to a true fix or rehabilitation, the numbers start, you know, gaining zeros. And we've kind of come to the place where we don't have a corner, or a Band-Aid, or a cast to fix what we currently have.
I appreciate your honesty and knowledge on this, sir.
Thank you. What we need tonight, if it's acceptable to the council, is an authorization for Ms. Corvyn to sign the application on behalf of the town to move forward. Now, like I said, this is not enjoining us to accept any agreement or raise rates or anything. We will find out, if we are approved for this, what that agreement package looks like. And we would also, if, if I'm able to get the approval, to have Ms. Corvyn or the office of the town manager approve any other grants that we might be able to allocate or go for.
Mr. Austin, sometime if we get the packet, and there's some things, like, say, there's three things we have to do, and we don't like maybe one of them, can we still back out?
You can always back out of, of an award agreement. Sometimes, they are negotiable.
Okay.
I haven't, for, for one this big, I've never actually participated in it. These are EPA-funded and DEQ-administered. There's a whole lot of law that goes around them, but I could probably... There's a whole lot of law that goes around them, but I could probably, well, I would like to get CHA, which is the engineering firm that did this PER for us. They would like to meet with the council next month to give you a full, in-depth explanation of what we're actually looking at here. And he, the principal for that company is a man named Stephen Still. He is a funding guru, and hopefully he can answer any of those questions a whole lot better than I can.
I just was wondering when you said, you know, if there's three things that we would have to do and we weren't comfortable, we were on board with two of them and one we weren't, I just wanted to make sure we could sort of back out if need be.
We, yes, we can always back out before we agree to it.
Okay.
And then, and this is not what we're doing tonight. This is just.
Right, right. Now, I just wanted to make sure there's an out.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We're going to try to schedule that presentation. I believe it's on August the 11th.
I believe you're right.
It's your first work session in August.
Yep.
And so we will keep that pretty light. I think the council does have a small computer training at that same time for maybe 10 minutes and then, but we could always move that if you just want me to leave everything for the CHA presentation, but we can talk about that.
Ms. Corvin, you said that was the 11th?
August the 11th. I think that's our first work session in August. And it's quite a presentation that the council needs to see.
And I would also, we know that our clarifiers are, the two clarifiers that got flooded, that's not included in these immediates because that's being addressed by FEMA and VDIM. So that was not included in these immediate needs. I just wanted to clarify that before that got lost in the weeds.
Have we by any chance received any money from FEMA?
We received $8,600 back in October for the fuel that we used at the water treatment plant, for the wastewater treatment plant from September 25th until December 31st. We received a $202,000 check for reimbursement. That was 100% replacement for everything that I could allocate to the emergency. Going forward from there, we're looking at a 75% reimbursement. Currently was talking to the regional program delivery manager today, actually, for starting with those clarifier purchases, those temporary clarifier purchases. That's looking like a 75 from FEMA, the VDIM counterpart. Mr. William Colton is trying to get a 20% match from the state to go with that. So if we're very, very lucky and everything works out great, we're looking at 5% cost for recovery. Still a big number, but it's a whole lot less.
Thank you.
Ah, you're very welcome. Does anybody have any questions I might be able to answer?
So this whole list here needs to be completed by the 2029.
Yes.
Is that only if we're in that project or these things need to be done anyways? Is something's wrong with them?
Unfortunately, it's.
They need to be done?
Got to be done, yes.
So do we have a timeframe of just starting on this?
I'm sorry.
Do we have a timeframe of when we're going to try to start doing some of these items?
If we were to move forward with this and everybody's acceptable, the draft, that, this is a draft PER. It'll be finalized with our, with our application and everything. That goes back to the state. The state accepts the PER and tells us we can move forward. If we move forward with the PER, we would then select a firm to design anything that would be involved here. There'd be a large procurement process because of the money that's allowed here. We cannot use a term engineer. This would have to go out to the whole, everybody. Want to be very picky on this.
The application needs to be completed by the 27th? Is that because of this month?
Yeah. But if we, if we have that money, then we can start moving forward. Well, I'm sorry. If we, if we have that application in, that will live by itself if we get approved or not, because as the mayor said, this will have to happen regardless.
Right, okay.
Are there any incentives in place? I'm always going to ask the same question for green energy and building this new plant. Any way to go green on that? Any incentives out there for that or?
If we, if we just went down quickly, the first part right there, the headworks building enclosure, right now we're having to heat that, right? So we're using, I think we're using electric resistance coil on that. So just your glowing coil heater. We're looking to go back with a canopy structure because they don't actually have to be protected completely. So that right there is an energy savings right off the bat. Instead of heating them and running them intermittently off of what's known as a DP switch, when the temperature drops to a certain level, we'll bump them every few minutes and it'll keep them from freezing up. There's also primary clarifier equipment, these valves, tanks, and rehabs. They're ancient and they run on very efficient or very inefficient motors. Anytime that we can touch an electric motor and the drive gear that's accompanying it, we can go to a high efficiency, high efficiency, modern piece of equipment. As far as new green solar, there's nothing in this one particularly that's applicable, but.
Would you at least consider thinking about a AEP grant? I know they've got some money. AEP may even.
I love to go for any grant that's going to pay.
I've heard about some AEP grants on some of that kind of stuff for energy savings. Making energy, there's just a couple of different, I didn't know if you would at least.
I don't know if Duke Energy is applicable. We can look into that, but the AEP should be. And as the town of Withfield, the wastewater treat.
I think they have some money.
A little bit. I'll pay it monthly.
Check into that would be great.
I, I do believe that, well, I know that for the town of Withfield, the wastewater treatment plant is the number one energy consumer. And that's mainly because of their blowers.
And if AEP does a study onsite, they can make some recommendations. I think they'll actually come in and do a.
Audit.
Yes, sir. And then they can make the recommendations and maybe the grant would just be the time to do it, wouldn't it?
Well, the audit itself will be useful for applying for everything else.
Great.
Any item on this list going to give us a heartburn and probably delay that we can't meet the deadline?
So that's what we discussed a lot on Friday. I said, because my priorities are, number one, the criticality of it. If we don't fix this, we're going to be in bad, bad place. Number two would be, is it achievable in the timeline that we were given by DEQ? And then number three, can we financially acquire this at all? Number three being the last, I know that it's the bottom line at the end of the day, but even if we, we say that we can't and DEQ comes back and says we have to, we're kind of stuck. So the only heartburn, I guess, am I answering your question correctly?
Yeah. That's what I was concerned about. What kind of heartburn?
Yeah. There, there is an option if we put these things in phased construction. There's an option for us to back up the DEQ 2029, end of 2029 deadline, as long as we're showing progress. But it's, it's one of those games you don't want to bluff. You don't want to say we're going to do it and not have actionable plans or contracts on the table, because they'll just take it and they'll send us the bill. Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is you're asking authorization for council to authorize interim town manager Sherry Corvin to sign off on what?
Grant applications. Grant applications for this project.
We'll need a vote on that.
I'd like to make a motion for interim town manager Sherry Corvin to sign off on proceeding with the grant application, relying Mr. Austin to proceed with the grant application.
Thank you. Thank you for working time. I know when I went on my tour, I was kind of taken aback, looking at some of the equipment and couldn't believe how old the equipment is. So thank you for coming forth and getting the information that we need to proceed.
Thank you.
That's what I was thinking back on the tour. There were some bolts and I'm like.
But I know that they did get the bolts fixed after that, so.
Do we have a motion on the table? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. Is there any more questions, concerns? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Start with Vice Mayor.
Jonathan, Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Addison, no.
Hand, aye.
Thank you, sir.
Can I just say something real quick while Mr. Anderson's here? We went on, and I want to thank you for taking me on the emergency route tour the other day. It was really nice, a little scary for me a little bit with the, but it is nice. It is nice. And there are several vehicles you can get through and in and out there, correct?
Yes.
You took different departments there. Can you, can you elaborate on that just a smidge and update on the bridge?
When we, when we did the initial ride-through on the bypass, when we did the initial ride-through for the emergency bypass across Madison, for Madison Street, we did have two, two vehicles, one from Public Safety, one from EMS, both Durangos. Both of those are all-wheel-drive vehicles. They had no problem. We had Tourism and their four Transit Connect, small vehicles, front-wheel-drive. They had no issue getting up in normal weather up the, up the slope. Primarily leading off of Lee Street is where the biggest issue to overcome. It's a little bit of a steep pull. That vehicle didn't have any issue. The vehicle I was riding in was actually with Josh Sherretts. It's a rear-wheel-drive, 14-passenger van, also two-wheel-drive. One through where, you know, we didn't really experience any issue. So we don't expect that in an emergency situation, the vehicles we have at our disposal would be, you know, four-wheel-drive utilities, UTVs, pickup trucks, anything like that will have any issue to travel back and forth from terminus to terminus on the, on the, on the path to be able to help extract people if we ever had to. Again, we'll, we'll maintain the road. We'll do quarterly inspections to make sure that, you know, the gravel's still there and we don't have to do any prep work or, you know, touch up. I went and looked at it the other day after we had a couple of the hard rains. It seems to be weathering well. We shouldn't see a whole lot of drainage issues out of it. The size of stone we're using is fairly resistant to being washed away. It's not like a normal, normal driveway gravel. It's larger stone, anywhere from inch and a half to three and a half inches. So it's pretty, pretty robust when it comes to drainage issues. The bridge, the decking is, the decking has been applied. The contractor's in the process of getting ready to finish welding the supports for the new railing on. After all those supports are welded on, all the welding's done, the contractor will go back over top the wood deck material and apply the waterproof membrane on top of that. Once that's completed, they'll put the curb stops in, which are just basically what they're, what they are. They're to keep a vehicle from getting close to the edges and also provide a place for drains to go and be able to drain out off the side of the decking. After those are put in, then the contractor will arrange for a paving contractor to come in. The bridge is to receive a crowned top surface. It's about a two-inch crown in the middle, down to about an inch on the sides to give it good ability to shed water. That's what we had issues with before. Basically, the bridge had no pitch to it and had places where it would sit and hold water. With, with the waterproof membrane protecting the timbers and the new application of the paved surface, we should have little to no possibility for, for water to collect on it. The curb stops along the sides do have gaps. So it's basically, it's a railing that's, that's propped up off the deck a couple of inches intermittently to provide gaps where the water that does shed off of it will not accumulate anywhere and basically drain off of it quickly. That'll prevent any freeze thalls or any, like I said, accumulation of water on the decking that would cause rot issues. But once that's done, the last thing that the contractor will have to complete is all the zone coating. It's, it's almost like a polymer coating that VDOT requires on, on bridge, bridge, bridge features. All the steel will get, will get a coating on it to cover up any, basically cover any rust. I don't know if you guys are familiar with, it's called something, a product called Pore 15. It's basically a encapsulator. If there's any sections, it basically prevents rust from ever forming, basically by starving it up from oxygen. So that'll be the last aspect of it. When they get that done, our inspectors will come in and do a final inspection of all the railing and the deck work. I would assume that the railroad will come in and do their inspection of all the superstructure below it, the piers, the, the replacement floor beams, stringers and things like that, and basically do a final, final inspection and final checklist for that. So they're still moving on pretty quickly. I'm hoping, again, you know, we're looking at, I'm hoping mid-August, maybe. I mean, if everything goes good is what I'm hoping for. I mean, like I said, they're, they're probably two-thirds of the way finished with welding the railing supports on, which are just the vertical uprights. They'll get all those welded on and they'll come back and weld in the horizontal railing between those. So again, I'm, I'm hopeful that the rate they're going, if good weather keeps going, that they'll be able to, you know, proceed quickly and hopefully get a, get us a product to come take a look at soon.
I think they were finishing the wood or putting the.
Yes. They were, they were, they had to get the decking, the decking should have received all of the, basically lagged down and I'm trying to think that they had anything else. But they should, they should have the decking on. They had, the day we were out there, they had it laid out. It was not affixed to the stringers, but it was positioned. That was in anticipation for our inspector to come by, take a look at the placement of it. They're, they looked for gaps or deficiencies in the materials or, you know, anything like that. They want to look at it before it gets screwed down and basically approve it. After that, they began putting all the, basically they're like timberlock screws or probably 10-inch lag screws like for industrial applications. They'll, they'll go and affix the decking to the stringers, which are below it. So that was, that's probably completed by now. The day we were out there, they were just actually just laying down on there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think we're just.
I've got one more question. I want to make sure my note is right. Mr. Austin, you did say we're going to get reimbursed at the end of the project. Is that, is that what you said?
For the wastewater?
Yes.
Yes, for the wastewater, whatever the funding agreement would be, that would establish any type of principal forgiveness for any loan that we were to get for that. And that percentage rate would be awarded at the end of the project.
Make sure my note is right. Thanks, ma'am.
I think we're just so fortunate as a community that our bridge issues move forward where a lot of municipalities haven't been able to do that, so.
There's been, because there's been several that have had to keep them abandoned and potentially involve VDOT with the improvement, reinstallation of water, multi-million dollar.
And there was a lot of homework dug up, I think, by Ms. Corvin and Ms. Holden, I think, trying to track everything down. And it did get to moving quickly, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is presentation regarding proposed fencing at McWayne Shelter and solar lighting at the T-Ball Field Parks and Recreation. Director Josh Sherretts will speak.
This is, thank you all for having me today. This is essentially just a follow-up from my presentation on June 10th regarding the fencing around the McWayne Shelter and. So just so you all know, we do have it in our budget to proceed with the updated signage throughout our parks. And just to answer any questions of that, they will have uniform language regarding the hours of the parks and things. So we are able to go ahead and proceed with that. And I've been, began working with Tourism and Police Department regarding our Be Aware, the Be Aware Show You Care campaign, so we can start informing our citizens of the resources available to them if they do feel unsafe or something's just weird in the park, you know, what they can do with that. So we are able to go ahead and proceed with that.
Can you go back one second? Just, I'm sorry, Mr. Sherretts. Where does the 223-3378 number go?
That, that goes to my office. It goes to the Parks and Rec Department. So our main, our desk number. So that's the one that's monitored during our business hours.
So somebody would be answering that telephone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And unless it was an emergency, we would ask that you contact them.
Okay. Now, and I'm just going to ask, who would answer the, who, who's going to take that phone home after hours?
No, that's during, during business hours. So this would be something like a maintenance issue. You see a, you know, a tree limb is down or across a trail or something like that.
But I don't, I don't think that, is that listed on there? there? To me, to me now, could, and it may just be
It may, we could change it for maintenance or something like that.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm just curious because it may, I'm just looking at the, I'm just looking at, if it's not, if it's not someone quite like an emergency, but just say someone feels uncomfortable down there and they turn around, they call that number, but then there's no, there's no one to answer. So, can we maybe look at that or get some other thoughts on what council thinks?
Yeah.
You know, say if it's after like nine o'clock and there's two people down there and they don't feel comfortable, but they don't think it's really an emergency and they call that number, I would hate for that time gap.
Understood, understood.
Just, I mean, I don't know anybody else's thoughts, but.
I don't think that phone number should be on there at all. It should just be called 911.
Okay.
Only because you do sort of set yourself up to not be there to answer it.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure you need it because if you feel threatened, you can call 911.
Yeah.
Because even if you call him, he can't help you if you're in the park and you feel threatened.
Well, that's what I'm scared of. I would hate for somebody to think on the other line that they're going to get somebody at the 3378 and then, and it could be a matter of seconds, something happens to somebody and I would hate for that to happen.
Absolutely. And honestly, that does help a little bit in the signage to keep it from feeling so jam-packed, so we can take that out. I would like to leave for park reservations, please contact, and I have that
Oh, that's fine, sure.
So, we'll leave that in there, but we can absolutely take out otherwise, please call.
We'll talk to somebody about that. It's just a thought, please.
So, would you, the call 911, will you leave a number? It's like not a police or medic emergency, but it is an emergency with something with the pool or the park. They will be able to, central, will be able to contact you?
Yeah, I think we could potentially work on the wording there for park reservations or dot, 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 something like that that we could add to it.
Okay.
Or park maintenance issues.
Right. If they called 911, there would be a number for central control to make contact with someone.
Oh, understood, yeah.
And if, when they call into 911, central control is going to need to be able to contact someone
And that's, and that's my
with the rec department, so they will get, they will have your number on file. Okay.
Yeah, typically if they were to need something, if it was an emergency within our facility at 4th Street, anything like that, I would be the first one on the call from the police department to come in and go through.
Okay, okay. And just a consideration, on the bottom one you might, where it says something unsafe or, or, I'm sorry, or concerned, bless you, maybe you could do that in red?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just a thought, just a thought.
Yeah. And I'll work this up a little bit and I can send this back out to Sherri and send it to you all before we send it off to anyone for printing or anything like that. But the, one of the main topics for tonight was the continued discussion of the fence around McWayne Shelter. And I've had the opportunity to meet with a couple of you individually, just to look at the space so you can understand what we were talking about as the continuation of the board fence and then the gated area being the, matching that chain link. We do have a cost estimate and I spoke to the contractor today and he said he would honor that, that cost at this point, you know, for at least the next 30 days if we would like to proceed with that. And I've asked him to work up a price if this was, be something we would include in our budget for next year as well. So, with any kind of potential increases he may see at that point. So, I'm really just here to answer any questions or to feed into any thought processes regarding if we would like to move forward or how we would like to handle the proposed fencing around the McWayne Shelter.
You answered my question just a morning.
Okay.
This is, I have no issue as long as it is going to be available, when open at dusk and then closed at dawn.
And that would be something logistically, like we talked about this morning, we'd have to work, if, if that was something that council wanted us to look into, we would have to work with our staff, potentially Public Works and things like that to make sure that we could accommodate that open, we would unlock the gate at this time and close the gate at this time. It would be difficult, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's not due, but it would be something we would have to figure out between the two departments how we can make it.
I do have a question. I know when I went by you and I had talked about this, did you get an estimate on like the privacy screen that we had talked about?
Just the, the wind screening going around the pool
Yes, sir.
itself? Yeah, we can get that, you can get that for about a hundred dollars a roll for about a 20-foot section at Lowe's, and so I can get that. And that's a six-foot tall section and that would accommodate what we were talking about as far as that screening process would go. And that's something that we can do, both in, at the time, I think I'd sent an email on that too. At the time, it was out of stock at the one hearing with Phil. I haven't checked since I've been back as far as vacation was concerned, but we can absolutely look into that.
And the planks that were damaged, we were going to look at replacing those?
Yeah, we do have, we have backup planks for those to go. Yeah. Because that's not, it's not uncommon for those to get damaged by
Right, 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 right.
So, I guess, is there any direction on how you would like for me to proceed with this? Is it, is it just tabling this for a budget upcoming year or trying to proceed?
Well, I tell you what, and I hate to ask, but so we're all on the same page? Can you run through it one more time using like the upper?
Yeah, let me get to the
Sorry.
It's okay.
Well, like the wooden fence.
Oh, yeah. So, what we're talking, the wooden fence on the upper, on the upper photo is what is currently behind the Boyd Museum. We would be taking that same style of fence and matching that going around on top of the retaining wall along the parking lot area.
And not cover the retaining wall, correct?
Right, not covering the retaining wall.
Thank you.
And this, what this side of the fence you would see, obviously this is a little bit dated, but what you would see is this side, this type of the fence or that side of the fence facing out towards that parking lot. One, if you were trying to inhibit climbing or anything like that, there's no footholds in. And then the two gates, back to, so the two gates that you would see at the shelter in the upper right corner of this would match the existing pool fence. And there would be that 10-foot gate opening for utility vehicles or mowers.
This is just a question. Have you priced doing the whole fence and redoing the fence? Are we going to stain it all the same color?
No, it would just be a natural, it would just be a natural finish.
Natural, okay.
And it's treated, it's treated wood so that it would eventually age in the same
Age like that, okay.
Further discussion or, and again, today is just asking for guidance, what, do we want to hold off on this until next budget cycle or would we like to try and proceed with it as soon as possible? How, how would we like to do that?
The only reason I would like to proceed is just for the public safety piece of that, which is sort of what prompted the whole conversation. So, I would like to at least consider it's a small investment and I think it would make a big impact if you support that and feel like it's a good thing.
I feel, I feel like on two fronts of this. One, it would add so much deck area for us during the actual pool day that I think that would alleviate some of the strains on the pool itself. But then, two, with some of the, some of the issues that we have had, this monitored well and everything, I think it would eliminate some of those issues that we've had under that shelter area. Again, the, like the conversation we had this morning, the problem with that shelter area is it's so secluded. And I think if we could proceed with that and using the existing tables that we have and add the additional seating areas within the park that we can do fairly cheap, I think we would accommodate some of those that may have wanted that seating, especially finding those in shaded areas. The only thing that I would ask for a little bit of grace on is figuring out the, if we're going to plan on staff opening and closing that daily, because that may be something that we would have to consider and we'd have to work with, with other departments to make sure that works.
So, what, what was the cost?
Yes.
Allison.
Eight thousand four hundred and eighty-two.
How much longer is the pool going to be open?
Pool will be opened until mid-August. Once, once school goes back in session, we lose most of our lifeguards, so it's hard to operate too. But yeah, so mid-August.
But that shelter will be open daily, even when the pool closes and everything. That, I don't want to eliminate that.
Right.
I don't want to take that away from the citizens, so.
And like I said, that'll just be some staff discussion on how we can, how we can actually accommodate that.
What departments were you thinking about looking at, checking with?
Logistically, most, most sense would make between my department with Parks and Rec and with Public Works.
I was going to share, there's the, the guy that does the main street every day, I don't know his name, in the Public Works Department, he just does, he's out early, perfect person to go, because he's already there. And his job is just main street to keep everything picked up and tidied. So, he's right there every single day. So, I don't think it would be hard, but I agree that he's a part of it. But I think Public Works might be, might be able to help.
Yeah, I believe they might. And it would just be having discussions with, with that crew, with Mr. Hackler and seeing how we could potentially accommodate that. One of my concerns when we get talked about this morning is weekends. Sunday mornings typically, you know, we, like even my facility is not open till 1:00 on Sundays and it closes at 6:00, so it's not open, you know, like we are our regular hours, that 6:00 in the morning to 9:00 PM. So, that would be something that we would have to, we would have to work with, that we'd have to try and figure out how we can make that work. So, just a little bit of grace in, in getting to that and figuring out how we can make that work with everyone's schedules.
We need to make a motion on this?
You do. And I'll only agree if it is opened
Well, that'd be part of what's in
And I know the gentleman, he only works Monday through Friday. Is his job not, does he not take care of things seasonally?
I don't know.
And maybe it would be a discussion that, I have that discussion with Public Works prior to
But we have the Public Works staff that are, I mean, but there may be times it won't be open and we can't, there may be a time it couldn't be open, but the goal is to make sure it's open when it can be. But there may be a time it can't be open, so I don't want staff to feel like if it's not open that they're going to get screamed at, because that's not fair. It needs to be open when it makes sense and when it's reasonable. And maybe on a Sunday, I mean, maybe there's nobody there, but I think everybody's goal is to have it open. That's what we want, though, and we've been supportive of that.
With the exception of during, during the pool season where it would be closed during pool hours, because we would use that.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's different.
Okay.
But we, the rec department, I would, I need to see if you all can't work that out before we, it's not fair to say, you know, we'll get Public Works to do it and they're not here to, to hear the conversation as to what we're talking about, so.
I don't think it makes sense to not vote because we don't feel like staff can work it out. Staff are capable of working out their schedule.
I didn't say they were not capable of working out the schedule. I said that it's not fair that Public Works is not here to be a part of the conversation.
The Public Works will do whatever they're asked to do. I mean, it's just unlocking the gate.
If, I would rather the rec department take care of it before we nominate another department without them being present and being a part of the conversation. That's not fair.
We don't have to nominate, then we're saying that's an option. Nobody said they had to do it. But we have staff that are capable of unlocking a gate, surely. It's just, it's that simple. We have that. We need to move on and get it fenced so it's safe. So, I don't know what else to say except I want to make the motion that we move forward with having the pool fenced in and that it be open every possible opportunity
Every day.
after the pool is closed or whenever, whenever is feasible, when the staff work out their schedule. This is a public safety issue.
We have police department.
And that's what it is, it's a public safety issue. So, I mean, we've been talking about it for all this time and we're still at the same place. We have given our word that we would accommodate that it would be open. I don't know what else we can do, but we didn't commit anybody to opening the gate. But of all the staff we have, somebody can't unlock a gate? Yes, they can.
Well, let me ask a question.
There's just no sense, it shouldn't be stalled because of that.
Since the, since like police, fire and rescue, you know, we have like 24/7 coverage and they have, I'm sure, well, I don't want to assume, I'm sorry, they have probably keys to some things, I would think?
The, all I'm saying is out of all these departments, these professionals can work that out. We don't need to be working out who is unlocking the gate. That's what they do. I don't know who's going to unlock the gate, but we're going to ask them to unlock it. Is that fair, Ms. Holton? Am I being fair in saying that I don't know who's going to unlock it, but of all the departments that we have, we'll get it unlocked? I mean, that's not hard. I think we can manage that.
Same people who open and close the restroom.
And the restrooms, I was going to say, the restrooms down there, they're open and closed every day.
Well, that's, that's an electric block.
Yeah, they lock on their own.
And maybe we could do something on the gate. There's ways to work that out, but I'd like us to move forward so we can get the contractor there, get us started. But we want the same thing you want. We want it open as much as it can be. But I don't want to stall it to, I don't see why we're stalling any further on it, so. I'm making a recommendation, please, that we move forward with having the fence installed and that we commit to having it open anytime we possibly can, as long as it works out with the staff schedule. That's my motion.
See, that's not, that's, as long as it, wait, hold, let me finish, please. You're saying as long as it works out with staff's schedule. I asked that it be open every day because, let me finish, I'll let you speak, let me speak. Because there are people that go there, we have children that are homeschooled, they go to the park, they may want to go into the shelter. The lady that I saw, the family that I saw that was celebrating Mother's Day.
I was with you, ma'am.
Exactly, so, I'm not
But they're down there, there's not people down there all the time.
But the motion that you're making is saying when we can, not that it will be open every day. I'm listening to what you're saying.
But I'm just trying to say
And what I'm asking is that it
On Christmas Eve, if it's going to be open.
Be open every day.
Well, it may not be open on Christmas Eve.
If we're going to be
It may not be open when the town is not open. I'm not committing to that. There are, we have a public parks all over the place.
Um, no.
So, my motion is that we have it fenced for a safety issue and we'll have it open, but you too much control and you can't control everything and you cannot control
That's what I was told, is that it would be every day. And I had no problem going along with this
Every day, when it's reasonable.
because it was going to be available to the citizens.
On Christmas Day?
And if it's not going to be available, then I'm not going to vote for it.
You don't have to vote for it.
We have citizens that pay taxes and they should be entitled to that.
You don't have to vote for it. I have made a motion, it is on the table. My motion is on the table. Is there a second?
We do have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, is there any further dialogue?
I do want to say, I do want to say, from my understanding, it was going to be open. It was going to be open. And, and I don't mean to be ugly, and I'm not trying to be ugly, but I sometimes have a hard time with staff telling us things when it comes to something simple as open up a gate, you know, and their schedules and things like that. I'm sure some would be glad, and I'm sure some would not be glad to do things and think it's going to be another thing thrown onto them. I do have huge safety concerns. I do, I did share with Mr. Sheretz some other issues that maybe some aren't aware of. I do want to see that closed for safety issues, point blank, and a screen put up, point blank. We've talked about that. And I hope that happens as well. But if it is not open every day like it is to the public, I would like to wait until we can figure, whoever can figure that, whether it be Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, that is, I would like to see it open, I would like to see it continued open every day.
At no point did I hear these staff say that they would not unlock the gate. They didn't say that. I am the one who said that they should not have to on Christmas Day, or they should not have to on Thanksgiving Day, and I'm going to, I'm going to stick to that. My motion's on the table still. We have a second.
We can have dialogue before we vote. We know your motion's on the table, but I see the safety concern, but at the same time, you promised me that it would be open every day. That was your words when you talked to me in the park.
First of all.
That's, okay.
We had a meeting in the park.
Okay.
And it was my meeting. You didn't even know anything about what was going on down there until I'm the one that asked you.
No, I did, sir. Yes, I did. Because I sat here, I'm not even going to argue with you, because I read a message from a young, a young lady sent me a message, and we also asked for bike patrols in the park. But at the same time, I'm not going to cut the citizens short. It is a safety issue and a safety concern, but at the same time, we need to enforce the rules.
It's more important to keep them safe.
We can enforce rules one place, but we can't enforce them another. So my point is enforce the rules all the way around.
And I think that we have staff that are doing their great best, but you cannot have a person standing at that park 24 hours a day. We've had this conversation already. It is an unsafe space that needs to be fenced for safety purposes.
Nobody said it. I'm not in disagreement with that. What I'm in disagreement is, you promised.
I didn't prom, whoa, whoa.
Yes, you did.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You are so ridiculous. I don't promise anything.
You did.
First of all, I promised you that I would...
Your words.
Okay. Well, you can say what you want to, but I'm sick of this nonsense.
Your words.
I'm done with the conversation on this. I have nothing else to say about it.
No, it's nonsense.
It's nonsense, you say I promised you?
No, it's not.
I don't have any authority to promise you anything over them. You, just like Chief Hatch, I can't promise you anything, and I did not. I, what I said is that...
I wasn't there. Don't say I'm just like anybody. I'm Candace Johnson, sir.
Can we get back to the subject on hand, please?
You are, excuse me?
I said I'm Candace Johnson, sir.
What's that, I don't know what you're talking about.
You said I was just like Chief Hatch. Is that not what you said? Repeat what you said.
I'm not, I don't...
All right, well, this is, we're going off track here.
Let's go on. I'm going to go home. I'm moving forward. It's ridiculous.
So, do we have any more dialogue on that particular subject? All right. Here are none. We're going to need a roll call vote. Start with Vice Mayor.
If the gates are not going to be open every day, no.
I have to, the gates aren't open every day.
Yes.
None.
Patterson, yes.
And Hand, yes.
Very good. I'm going to move to the lighting.
Whatever you have next on your agenda.
So, I was able to, one of the requests, the last meeting, was to look into the cost of solar lighting around the T-ball area. So I was able to get a quote on that, and it breaks down to, and these are like what you would see equivalent to a streetlight, these are pole light that would be, but it would just be solar powered. They would have a large battery pack that would be down beside them. It kind of looks like a small transformer box that you would see alongside most streetlights. And then, they, they didn't do a very good job in this picture of, I did bring with you, with me something to share, and I would be happy to send this to you. This kind of shows a comparison of what the park looks like at night, what a parking lot there at the T-ball field looks like at night, and this would be the comparison with three of those lights around that parking lot area. It's a little bit better in color. But for the most part, the communities that have installed these are pretty happy with them. And at this point, solar technology is advancing regularly, so it is very possible that these could be outdated in a couple of years, but I think the total cost per light, I think it breaks down to $7,367.36 per light. I would recommend that this be looked at and to be included into next year's capital, CIP, for something like that. I don't have in my budget anywhere to absorb that at this point.
Mr. Sheretz, you said this is the T-ball field?
This is a T-ball field.
At the old Pizza Hut.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you help me?
Yes, sir.
Can you remind me, because I think you said that there were no night activities there at that T-ball?
There's, there's not.
So why, can you just help me understand, why we're putting lights in?
This is, this is just for safety lighting, so this is, what was shown in this was maybe not accurate what we were trying to do. We were trying to just get something over each parking lot, so at the end of the night, when those games do wrap up, you know, because they, they wrap up sometimes going into the nighttime. And so just to have some way, if you were to park there, that you would have some safe avenue, or a little bit better feeling of safety walking out of there.
So what would be the disadvantage to setting a pole and doing a dusk dawn light for like $60 a month? Only because it's $21,000 for three lights?
Right.
It just seems really high, and even though I want to do solar power, it needs to make sense financially.
Yeah. The, the problem with the pole light like that is it's just small. Your footprint, this covers, this covers a third of that parking lot space. A pole light would cover, you know, that's essentially like a doorway, you know, something like that. It's, you're looking at a smaller, like a 10 by 10 space of adequate lighting for that. So what we would be looking at in something like this is if it was approved, and again, it can be added to in the CIP submittal for next year and for consideration at that. And at that point, there may be another option, and there may be another lighting option that we can get out there. But they are feasible to do, and they are, they would be appropriate for that space. But we can also, at the same time, look into maybe some electrical infrastructure in the space that would cut down significantly on the cost of that.
Thank you.
But at this point, we're just looking into the solar lighting, so...
And I'm going to keep asking Mrs. Holton about this energy grant, because I don't know what all it involves. Would it involve anything like that, solar?
Not particularly. That grant's mainly focused on existing facilities and finding ways to make our facilities more efficient.
I think you're coming. I'm sorry that I keep asking, but I didn't know if we could tap into any of that.
And I've also looked into the AEP grant for that, and that would be, again, an existing, an existing structure. So we'd be replacing this light with something else.
Thank you very much.
Are there...
Any more questions?
Any other questions for me on that?
You said you're going to put that, you're going to want to budget that for next year?
Yeah, that, I would recommend we put that. I don't, I don't have any way of absorbing that cost in my budget this year, but that would be something, it would definitely be a good idea for, for the next, this upcoming budget.
Thank you for the information on that.
Thank you all very much. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving forward on the agenda, just discussion regarding town appointed employees have been moved to a closed session. So next on the agenda would be a discussion regarding the request of Mountain Empire Airport for the town of Witfield to participate in the purchase of a truck. And interim Town Manager Sherry Corbin will help us.
Yes, ma'am. This was a request that the town received while the former interim Town Manager was here, with the airport is asking each participating locality to contribute $4,900 for a truck that will be used to clear snow from the runway. I have checked with the county of Witfield, and they have advised that their budget committee is recommending that they fund the 4,900. So I believe that the county will participate, and Mr. Moore had put in a report to the council on June 30th that he feels like each locality is going to pay the requested amount. So if the council's good with paying that, of course, I could check with the airport to see, you know, if others have paid, then I could ask the Town Treasurer to put a check that amount to the airport commission, if you'd like to make a motion for me to do that, or to participate for the 4,900.
Ms. Corbin, and how much was that total?
It's $4,900 for each locality, so that's what the town would need to contribute.
I think that'd be good, and that'd be for like snow and stuff, not running back and forth.
Yes, it's for the snow, to remove it from the airport runway.
I wonder if they'll give us like a ride?
I'm sure they would. They would love to have y'all out there and look at some of the airplanes and stuff that come down.
Mr. Elmore, but I'd be like the, I'm just scared of heights.
I don't think it's a good thing. Anyway, do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
And would this only be if the other localities participated?
Of course. I would like to see us just go ahead and do it. I think that we need to be, for our part, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I, I, yes, ma'am. Please.
They've always asked for a lot and not gotten anything, so...
Well, and you never know, we may have to fly out of there.
Okay. We'll get the check.
Keep the people safe.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor Taylor. Please, thank you.
And I've got a second.
Oh, sorry.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, and I guess that needed to be a roll call vote, is what it says. Okay, all right. So we'll start with Vice Mayor, please. We're voting again.
Johnson.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Hand, aye.
All right, next on the agenda is purchases. We have fire truck.
Yes, as you sit at your place, each person has a listing from the Town Treasurer. She put this together today of the town's accounts, and I think she has marked it in yellow. The, as you can see, the first one in yellow is the National Bank, it's the rainy day fund, and that's set up for emergencies. And then down near the bottom, you have the VIP reserve account, which is committed for debt. You have that amount over to the right. And then you have the VIP operating, which is excess operating funds. So I think the rainy day fund and the excess operating funds, I did put her email with it, so those are the two that don't have any commitments, but the VIP reserve account is committed for debt. And you can see down at the bottom, she did put the current interest rates for these accounts, and one is at 4.5% interest rate, and the VIP is 4.38 to 4.46 on a daily yield interest rate. So this is, you wanted this, these amounts to see if you wanted to talk about paying cash for the fire truck, or if you wanted to consider a seven or 10-year financing of the fire truck.
Did Chief Slimp, was he able to find out anything? Do you know?
And he was going to find out about, remember that?
Yes, he was going to try to answer and get, answer the question for us for this meeting.
Yes, ma'am. And he may not have, I just didn't know if he had heard back.
Well, I've heard from him, but can you recall what he was going to find out?
Let me just try to think back. Whether or not we could go ahead and if, if we did not decide to pay cash like Mr. Hand, if we did like a 10-year loan, could we pay it in seven? Would we save a little bit? How much would we save?
Now, he didn't get back with me on that. He did tell me that we would need to make a decision about either financing or paying cash before the truck lift a manufacturer, and he said that would be in August. So we would need to make a decision soon about this. But he did not tell me anything about, you know, saving or anything.
No, that's fine, that's fine. And he may not been, he may have not got the email back, it was just a consideration on his, yeah, right.
Ms. Holton, do you have any thoughts on this? And I was, I was wrong about the interest rate. I apologize, I wasn't sure, but we're getting more interest than I thought. We're getting 4%, which I can't believe. That's great, but, so the cash thing is either or. It's whatever, it's just keep in mind, the budget for the next eight years, we have to squeeze in this extra money, and we can just pay for it and be done. So I, I think there's pros and cons. Would you like to share?
I mean, the only thing I can share is just based on, you know, traditional accounting, you're going to pay less if you finance it for less years, right? Because you're going to save on your interest. And if you pay cash, you're going to pay less, because you won't be paying any interest. So really, it's just a council decision on whether you want to pay now.
If we pay cash, I understand he told us that we have to pay ahead of time.
Yes, we'll have to pay it in this fiscal year.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. And I think you said our first payment, if we didn't, would be next August, which would be...
That's correct.
Right. But I don't know how much that payment is going to be. I'd be interested to know how much a payment would be that big on only seven years. If you did it for seven, you'd get a cheaper rate.
And I think he was going to...
But I did, myself, to see what, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you.
No, 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 I think he was also going to check to see if we paid it, I think he was going to see if we paid it in cash, if we could get a cheaper, if we could get it cheaper, so, and he may have got tied up on a fire rescue call or something.
So I'm looking at the council minutes from, the agenda from yesterday, and what was in there was you can do a term of seven years at 4.65% for an annual payment of $120,994.
Correct.
Or you can go 10 years at an annual payment of $91,295, interest rate at 4.88%.
I don't think there's a wrong way.
What's the amount for the 4.65%?
I'm not sure there's...
129.94 annually.
29.94?
129.94 annually, correct. For seven years.
91.25 for...
Forty-five, I'm sorry, 91.295 for 10 years.
Now, I can just make a statement. She doesn't have a yellow mark on the $16 million that we have. We have 16, we have 11, 9, and then 5, 6, and those are just savings accounts. They're called community center funds. When I was on council the first time, I was so confused over that, because I didn't understand why that fund, but it's just a savings account. So we do have 16 million in addition to what is in a yellow. So just want to make sure you know we have a lot more money than just what's in yellow. And that money is not spoken for either. None of that money is pledged.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Hand?
For operational funds, you mean?
Yes, ma'am, for this, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
If you look on this page right here, if you go down that first big number, that's $11 million, that's just a savings account. Right under that's another one for $5 million. That's just a savings account. She's not, I'm just saying, we have more money than just what's in a yellow. We have 16 million dollars that's not in yellow. I just think it's odd that that's...
Not highlighted, and you said, you said that should be in yellow.
Well, it's, it's funds that we have in cash that, if I'm not, and I'm not, I don't want to misspeak, that isn't pledged. So like if we pledged something for, and I don't want to, I don't want to argue with the Town Treasurer.
That may be due to auditing, because, you know, the auditors say we have to have so much money kept in reserves, so maybe that's why she didn't mark it.
And that's okay. I was just saying, we do have $16 million. I shouldn't have even pressed the issue, I'm sorry, I was just making...
That may, that may, I don't know that to be a fact, but that may be.
Right, and some of that money is for operational costs as well.
And we know what it's been at all, I was just saying, it doesn't look like, I like to pay cash, if, I don't know what y'all think, but it would save us some money. We have the money, we don't have that payment of $120,000 for the next seven years, or $90,000 for the next 10 years. Sort of puts that off on the next people on council that'll be making those payments.
When was the date we would have to pay if we went?
It would be in August of this year.
So it's like coming up.
Yes, ma'am. Next month you'll have to pay that. When at least the manufacturer will have to pay.
Regardless, just pay it now, or pay it next year, or pay it over 10, but financially, and I'm not a finance expert, I would just say that financially, it seems to me it would make more sense to pay for it, especially since it's so much less than we thought, because he was talking 1.3, remember? And now it's 800, and that's, that's a $500,000 difference. If it were 1.3, I wouldn't be suggesting that we pay cash.
Well, like I said, they may, if they know we're serious and we're going to pay cash, they may knock a little bit more off, too, so...
And he said that, that they might, so...
And actually, the amount is, it says up to $709,085 is what...
Well, we're getting $100,000 trading for our truck.
Well, now that would be, but this would still be what you'd have to pay, actually 809,000 minus 100 is 709.
Yes, 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 thank you, I understand.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and pay cash for the fire truck. Go ahead and make the, I guess, cut the check in August, or whatever the terms are. Have Chief Slimp go ahead and look into getting the truck he requested for the department and for the town.
So I have a motion?
So you said to pay cash?
Cash. Instead of, instead of seven...
Do I have a second?
Yeah, sorry.
Then we'll go to dialogue.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not trying to interrupt you. I'm just, you know...
It's okay.
But she just, she was just trying to figure out before...
It's all right. It's okay.
Well, I would, I would, I would like to explain, from my understanding, and I could be wrong, but go ahead and pay cash for it. Go ahead and cut the check in August or whenever that we get the agreement worked out, instead of doing over seven to 10 years with the interest rate. That's the motion I'd like to make.
And I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. Motion second now. Is there any further questions, dialogue? Some places all good? All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hand?
Aye.
Edison, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Don't.
I'm excited. Thank you, guys. I want to ride it.
Right.
I want to drive it.
I love our truck from a kid.
So next on the agenda is council member time. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything.
I wanted to check, and I wasn't for sure if Public Works was able to get any information about the boom arm.
He has requested an equi, an equate, but it's not been received.
That's fine, that's fine.
He checked on that today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Other than that, no.
So you're done, you're done? I didn't have anything either.
I just have one quick question. I was wondering if we were doing fruit at the pool. I forgot to ask Mr. Sherritt.
He is, he actually told us today that he is providing that under the HEAL program.
Thank you. I appreciate it so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. I just hadn't been asked.
So if there's nothing else to come before council, council feels necessary to go into a closed meeting? Closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711, a dot, one dot, to discuss item C, discussion regarding town appointment, appointed positions. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? I hear none. All party signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As well, any pose? And now, in closed session.
By stating that the Town Council is now in open session, a motion is necessary to certify that only matters lawfully convening in the open session were discussed. Do I need a motion?
So may.
A motion, do we have a second? Motion, second, is there any discussion? I hear none, this be roll call vote, Vice Mayor.
Johnson aye.
Atkins aye.
Taylor aye.
Edison aye.
And aye.
All right, we are now in open session, councilors, is there anything else that you want to bring forward at this time? I hear none, we all.
Mhm.